Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. This is a conference meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live on Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand, can and will be rebroadcast if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this December 1st meeting of the Council and further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely, and when it is time for public comment, I will give those instructions there as well. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Counselor Cummings? Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Present.
Counselor Russo?
Present.
Counselor Schleger?
Here.
Counselor Yakobellis?
Present.
Mayor Spiller?
Present. Thank you very much. First, we have a proclamation. Mr. Deputy Mayor, would you like to do the honors, please?
I would be honored to do the honors. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Reverend Leggett is an old friend of mine for many years, and Allison actually has been his secretary for many years as well, so thank you. This is a proclamation thanking the Reverend Dr. Paul A. Leggett for his years of dedicated service in the township of Montclair. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Paul A. Leggett has been pastor of Grace Presbyterian Church since 1981, and whereas Reverend Leggett is a lifelong Essex County resident, except for time at college and missionary work in Costa Rica, and has contributed greatly to the life of Montclair Township in its church ministry and civic affairs. And whereas Reverend Leggett was appointed by Mayor Matthew Carter to the Township Affordable Housing Commission, has been a board member of HomeCorps and has been involved in many activities with the Salvation Army, the Interfaith Hospitality Network... I'm sorry, I lost my spot. Interfaith Hospitality Network, Rotary, and numerous local charitable activities, and has addressed the Township Council concerning housing and zoning matters. And whereas Reverend Leggett has been a chaplain to the Montclair Police Department for five years, and whereas Reverend Leggett has been an active member of the Montclair Interfaith Clergy Association and has worked with pastors and leaders of many faith organizations in Montclair, and has preached in many other Montclair churches and synagogues. And whereas Reverend Leggett is also an educator and has been working as an adjunct professor at Montclair State University, teaching in the Classics and General Humanities Department, and has published two books and written numerous scholarly articles. And whereas Reverend Leggett has performed and officiated at hundreds of baptisms, marriages, and funeral services, and has conscientiously visited and prayed with people in hospitals and nursing homes and at their homes, and has preached the good news to thousands of people at Grace Church and in our metropolitan area. And whereas Reverend Leggett is retiring after an exemplary career in ministry and as pastor at Grace Presbyterian Church on December 31, 2020. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair hereby extend our appreciation to the Reverend Dr. Paul A. Leggett for his years of dedicated service in the Township of Montclair, and do wish him a very blessed, happy, and well-deserved retirement. And I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Move the second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you, we all, and Karen, and thank you for reading that, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Next, we'll open this up for public comment. Those who wish to participate now during public comment should dial into 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 179-636-6334, then press pound. When asked to enter a number, simply press pound. When asked, please state your name and then press pound. The administrator will say when it's your turn to speak, and the caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comments. And with that, Mr. Stafford, I will turn it over to you for management of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Caller with the number starting 973-816. It is your turn to make your comment. Please do your best to keep your comments under three minutes and state your name for the record. Caller with the number starting 973-816. Hello, caller with the number starting 973-816. Caller with the number starting 973-619. It is your turn to make your comment. Please do your best to keep your comments under three minutes and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. I hope you've all had a nice Thanksgiving. I went on a nature walk, nature hike. It was all that it needed to be. My name is Ahava Felicidad. I'd like my five minutes as an org leader. I'm that president, the one who works for the Tenant Organization of Montclair Advocacy Group. First, I'd like to share a little bit about me for you all, everyone listening in the public. Not only was I born and raised well-rounded in Montclair, New Jersey, I actually really love living here. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I've moved at least 18 times, in and out of college dorms and apartments, in grad and undergrad, and as a working adult, all as a renter. I became a homeowner during my super senior year while still in college and paying rent. I shared a home with my parents, who have since transitioned to heaven in fall of 2015 and fall of 2018, my mother and father respectively. To no surprise, I was asked to lead this movement. Then came the 4/11/19, 4/11/2019 Forum on Rent Control in a building that sits on the grounds of where I first learned to swim. That building is now the Charles Bullock School. At this forum, I stood up. I had to revitalize this movement. It's in my heart, it's in my DNA to get rent control implemented in Montclair. This is the community that poured into me. I know this town, I know how it ticks, from the rocks in Anderson Park to the trees in Glenfield, from Floyd Hall Arena to Ward Place, from the Beth Snow Hill in Canterbury Park to the Beth Snow Hill on Upper Mountain Ave across from Mountainside Pool and in between Nishuane and Clari Anderson, from my friends' homes on Willadel, North Fullerton, Melrose, Brookfield, Valley, Bellevue, Lorraine, Prescott, Buckingham, Grove Street, from Applegate Farms to what used to be Gelati and what used to be Woods Ice Cream Shop. Our rent control ordinance must be implemented. In full agreement with our main advisors, Mitch Khan of the NJPO, the New Jersey Tenant Organization, and Mr. William Scott, a well-known Montclerian of many commissions, we would like to say this about our approved rent control ordinance of April 7, 2020. It's a very moderate rent control ordinance. It's not a strict ordinance. It's more than fair to the landlords and property owners. What we feel is that the landlord should drop this thing, drop the lawsuit, let the ordinance be implemented, live with it for one to two years, and if there are any problems after one to two years, we of the Tenant Organization of Montclair Advocacy Group, also known as TUM, bring it up with the mayor and council, and the landlord and property owners who are in opposition currently have the right to do the same, one to two years. We would like to welcome our new homeowners from Gordon Hurst Avenue, Maple Avenue, and the streets near Brookdale Park. What we ask tonight is would you be open to sending a mailing to every resident in a rental dwelling and every resident in a rental multifamily house renting about the rent freeze extension upon its anticipated full approval on December 15 of 2020? That's an ask for tonight. And then what we want to remind the public is to reach out to us at tenantsorganizationmontclair@gmail.com. We always need interns and volunteers. We have a blog that you can use to express your voice for housing advocacy and rent control. We have a Facebook page, and we love to enter face, face-to-face and door-to-door with our community and more. Thank you all, Mayor and Council, so much for your support. Have a good night.
Caller with the number beginning 201407. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments below three minutes. Again, caller with the number starting 201407.
Hello, can you hear me, guys?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Anna Spinoza. I've been living in Montclair for the past 27 years, and it's a wonderful town to live in. I can't complain coming down from the shore. And shores are different variety. I like the diversity that the town has. Now that I'm working full-time and have an older lady, my mother will be living with me, I would like to see if I can have any type of rent control established for tenants that, for tenants people like us paying rent on a monthly basis or yearly basis. That means that it makes sense, nothing high, or something stable like in New York where they have a rent control for seniors? That would be great. We would not like to move out of Montclair, have been living for 27 years, and it's a wonderful town to live in, peaceful, quiet, tranquil, and I would not like to change it at all. That's my comment.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting with 201233. It is now your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Igoe, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a homeowner in Montclair, and I'm calling in to voice my support for extending the rent freeze, as Ahava mentioned, and also to be able to fully, finally, implement rent control in Montclair. The pandemic is ongoing, and Montclair residents should not have to continue to worry about losing housing further because of things that the rent freeze will help, and then ongoing support via rent control. Thank you to the council also for your continued support, and I want to encourage any residents listening to get involved with the movement for rent control. You can visit montclerentcontrol.org or email tenantsorganizationmontclair@gmail.org. Yes, thank you again to the council. That's my comment.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-886. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments below three minutes.
Hi, thank you. This is Betsy Tesler. I'm a 20-year homeowner on Burnside Street in Montclair. I'd like to comment on a few different issues tonight. I'm going to get back to Burnside Street at the end of my comments. First, I want to echo Ahava and Gillian and others who have spoken in support of extending the rent freeze and thank the council for that. We know that many Montclair renters are continuing to experience hardships as a result of the pandemic, so the rent freeze extension is really essential. As Gillian mentioned, I'd also like to again invite our fellow homeowners who might be listening to join the Tenant Organization of Montclair Homeowners Committee to support the implementation of the rent control ordinance in an ongoing way. Second, I would like to thank Counselor Yakobellis for coming out to Burnside Street last night to see a perfect example of how our street floods almost every time there is a steady downpour for more than a few minutes. Really appreciate you taking the time to come over and take a look for yourself. I'd like to thank Counselor Schleger for your ongoing work with us to help resolve this issue permanently, and also for your help last night to solve our acute flooding problem as we all watched the waters get closer and closer to our front doors and basement windows. And then finally, I'd also like to thank Counselors Yakobellis and Price Abrams for the commitment they expressed in an email to my neighbors and me last night to help us resolve this ongoing threat to our safety and properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-747. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Yes, this is William Scott. Can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Scott.
Hello, everyone, and again, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday. I'm sure each of the council members, including the mayor, received my request for the extension of the rent freeze ordinance, and I appreciate the mayor's response back and also Mr. Yakobellis' response back to my email. I appreciate that. In the request, there were several organizations that were listed as supporters for the extension of the rent freeze. Those, members of those organizations are calling in, and you've heard some of their names already, so I won't repeat those. But I also would like to ask the question to Mr. Karazak in regards to the status of the litigation with the rent control ordinance. I'm just questioning the status from a standpoint, did the judge suspend the curing process of the 100 and some odd petitions that were in question? And we've been tracking the court proceedings. The last date that we see any activity was, I believe, on the November 13 timeframe, and I believe there was supposed to be additional litigation after the November 23 timeframe. So is it possible for you to give us an update as to exactly what is going on with the litigation, and was the curing process suspended by the judge?
Mr. Karasik, if you can address those questions.
There have been no developments since the last council meeting between, I think, the league municipalities and the judges school that they have and the holiday. There just hasn't been anything happened since then. There was supposed to be a hearing at that time. Court postponed it, and frankly, there's been, there's really nothing to report on that score.
You kind of faded out there at the end of your statement.
I'm sorry. I basically said that there's nothing to report, nothing's occurred. The court has a court, we're waiting for the court, but again, with the holiday, nothing's happened. Obviously, we're not going to let it sit. We're going to start instigating action, let's put it that way.
Okay, and just one last question. The curing process obviously is a statewide legal process for all the townships and municipalities within the state of New Jersey, and I'm just wondering, does the judge have the capability of suspending that type of regulation as it would affect the entire state of New Jersey if they had similar proceedings?
Well, that's the legal question, one of the legal questions in the case. One of them is, of course, does the judge have the right to or ability, or was he act correct when he allowed them to, the plaintiffs, to carry on with their petition for months and months rather than a moment for 20 days? And now with the curing of the petition, which is supposed to be within 10 days, the judge has suspended that as well, and as far as we're concerned, at least, the judge's action is not lawful, but unfortunately, the only people that can say that are appellate court. So moving forward, I can only say that it's our position that the judge can do it, however, he has, and we're going to fight that position.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Caller with the number beginning 973-820. It is your turn to comment. 973-820. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening. This is Toni Martin with the Tenant Organization of Montclair and Montclair Citizens for Rent Control. To follow up just a bit, as Mr. Scott pointed out, we have been tracking the court records. We're so very serious about walking side by side with you through this. We appreciate the vigorous defense of the ordinance that Mr. Karasik makes in the court filings that I've read, and he talks about how in order for the judge to actually allow the plaintiffs to continue to stymie implementation of the ordinance, they would have to violate not only municipal powers but state powers and, you know, and the governor's executive order on coronavirus. Nevertheless, they have this compliant judge. So, you know, I know that the Montclair Property Owners Association Group, which hired these lawyers and which represents a few of the major real estate developers in town, certainly not all landlords hereabouts, by the way. The MPOA says in a letter to the court last month that it is taking a brief hiatus from legal action to see if negotiations could be arranged. Well, the flint hammer of their incessant court action before this landlord-friendly judge does not make the tenants' organization more receptive, but only stiffens our resolve. I know it must be the same for the mayor and the council. The MPOA has accused all of us of being undemocratic, unethical, and pretty much un-American for supporting this rent control ordinance. In any case, we will have the freeze extended. I'm sure that you will do the right thing here, and I want to ask, in addition to what Ahava has asked, I would ask that you properly notify all landlords of the extension of the freeze. When the original freeze was implemented, we had a lot of difficulty with landlords being unaware. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number beginning 201264. It is your turn to comment. 201264. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Hi, this is Pribyda Saha. I've been renting in Montclair for two years now, so relatively a baby to the town, but I feel, already feel very connected to it and very willing to give back and contribute as much as possible. I would like to voice my support for the rent control ballot addition as well as extending the rent freeze as many others have on the call tonight. In addition, I'm hoping that the town council can help educate tenants and landlords on continued, the continued moratorium on evictions due to COVID-19. Hopefully, both the state and the country will extend that beyond December 31, and also hopefully the Montclair Police Department won't be used to enforce and perform evictions on landlords' behalf. You know, we just don't, we want everyone to be housed safely through this pandemic, through this poor economy, and through this winter. Thank you for the time.
Caller with the number beginning 908705. It is now your turn to comment. 908705. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Lily Quee. I'm a renter in Montclair and a member of Montclair State Policing. I am calling to express continued support for the rent control ordinance passed by the council earlier in the spring and for the extension of the rent freeze beyond December 31. And I would also like to take the opportunity to urge the mayor and council going forward to prioritize ensuring the availability of stable housing for all residents of Montclair, including those who are currently unhoused, those who are in precarious rental situations facing rising rents and at risk of being pushed out. We're, you know, obviously fortunate in New Jersey that our governors ordered an eviction moratorium for the duration of the public health crisis, but the housing crisis and the gentrification crisis are going to extend beyond the end of this pandemic. And I think now is the time to make a really strong commitment to our neighbors who have possibly spent the last 10 months not able to make rent and absent, you know, miraculous rent cancellation at the end of all this, risk being kicked out of their homes. So I'm urging the mayor and council to make it a priority, to devote in whatever way is possible, funding and political will to keeping every single Montclerian housed. And if necessary, right, and if possible, which I would argue the political will is there, it is possible, to look at redistributing funding that is going to our disproportionately large police department. And I'd like to echo Pribyda's sentiment and wish that none of us will have to see neighbors being evicted with the assistance of Montclair PD. Thank you very much. Good night.
Caller with the number starting 973493. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Elizabeth Perez. My name's Elizabeth Perez. I am a homeowner. I've actually, I am on house number three in Montclair, have been a homeowner for 28 years here, and I'm a member of the Homeowners Committee on the Tenant Organization of Montclair. I really am just calling to acknowledge my support of the rent control ordinance and some media implementation, and also support the rent freeze that I'm hopeful is continuing via an extension, and have a question. One is, when will we know that the extension is in effect? I'm assuming it's going to go into effect. I'm not sure, you know, I may have missed something. Is it? When will that be determined? And my second question is, how does the mayor and staff plan to communicate that? If and when they decide to do it? And I have one more question, and that is, what is going to lead you to say yea or nay on whether or not you will implement that extension? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 201874. 201874. It is your turn to comment. Please keep your comments under three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Louisa Hackett. I am a longtime homeowner in Montclair, New Jersey, and also a member of the Homeowners Committee of the TUM, the Tenant Association of Montclair. And I guess I am attending the meeting because I wanted to hear an update about the rent control ordinance and the rent freeze and... control ordinance and the rent freeze and explain my, or put in my word of support for those two things. And I guess I would just hope that you could answer Elizabeth Perez's, or someone could answer Elizabeth Perez's questions about the rent freeze. Has it been passed? And how will it be communicated? I know she had three, and I can't remember the third one. But I didn't hear an answer to her questions. I don't know if that's possible to have someone answer her questions. Thank you.
Can we just explain, manager, can we just explain, we're going to vote on a resolution tonight, isn't it? An ordinance?
Certainly. Item A on tonight's agenda, if there is a movement and a second, would be to introduce the ordinance amending two previous ordinances to extend the temporary moratorium on rent increase due to the current circumstances caused by the pandemic. Assuming that ordinance is introduced tonight, the ordinance by law would be listed for a future agenda. I believe it would be, although Ms. Bermeidaz Nieves could correct me, I believe it would likely be the January 5th meeting, and it would be listed on that agenda. Ordinances are required by law in the state of New Jersey to have two readings, an introduction, and then a second reading, and a public hearing. If the governing body passes the ordinance on second reading, the governing body, if it so chooses that night, and I believe it has done so twice before in the past, pass a resolution which would have the effect of that ordinance taking effect immediately rather than waiting the statutorily required, normally, 20-day estoppel period. So what is likely to happen, I suspect, given the governing body's actions twice before, is introduction tonight and then listing as required by law on a future meeting, I believe it would be January 5th, at which point it would be listed for a second reading and a public hearing, and then, if the governing body desires, also a resolution that evening so that the ordinance could take effect immediately.
The current ordinance expires the end of this year, right? December 31st? Am I correct?
That's correct.
So if we pass this January, the first week of January, it's made retroactive? Or, you know, how do we cover that few days that we won't have had it in effect?
That's exactly, that's exactly how it would be.
So, to the caller's points, and as manager's noted, in practical terms, this ordinance, this already exists. So there is currently a rent freeze in effect. It has been in effect for, from the first ordinance that we passed, which I believe is the one stated as 020-08. That ordinance was the original one that passed a rent freeze. We then extended that again with the second ordinance, which is listed. This would be the third ordinance, again extending it. And again, it's done so on the advice of legal counsel, as opposed to, and there was some question of just saying it extends to X period until after the pandemic. In his legal opinion, that is harder to defend in court than having a date-specific time. So we have a date-specific time listed in these ordinances. And then we simply come as we are now and move it as an agenda item to extend. That allows us to have the best protection under the law to ensure we get what we're hoping to have, which is a protection for, against rent increases. But again, this is not new in the sense of this ordinance is in effect. We have had rent freeze in effect during this pandemic, and this is an extension of that, one of the extensions, like with the extensions we've done before. So I just denote from those practical terms what that means. But this is another extension of that same ordinance. Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-337. It is your turn to comment. 973-337. Please state your name and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Horrigan, and I'm a homeowner in Montclair and also an owner of an eight-family apartment building. And I'm a member of the Property Owners Association. I've listened to the rent control group call in, enforce the last year or so. And I've sat in a few meetings before the ordinance was passed, were very organized and very vocal. And what I'm frustrated with is that I don't believe the council listened or entertained any property owners before that ordinance was passed. And what the Property Owners Association now is asking for is to simply put the issue to a townwide, open, honest, and, you know, straightforward dialogue to discuss the merits of rent control because it affects everyone in town, not just renters. So I encourage and urge this board to, or this council, rather, to open the dialogue, dialogue up to everybody, not just the limited vocal rent, rent control group. Thank you very much.
You mind if I answer that, Mayor?
Please do. Councilman?
Yeah, sir, I'd just like to say the discussion has always been open. I've been on the council for most years, more years than anyone else. We've at times had, we've had referenda, they failed. And, you know, it could happen now that we have a referenda, people vote on it. But you're always welcome, everyone's welcome to come and dialogue. It's not that there's a vocal rent control group. It's a vocal tenants group. Forty-two percent of our residents are tenants in one way or another. They rent apartments. Many of them are getting increases that are so astronomical they're forced out of their apartments. Most landlords are very good. They take good care of their buildings. Landlords can come and dialogue with us anytime. When you refer to them as a group, a vocal rent control group, it's not that they're a rent control group. They're a group of tenants, residents, citizens, voters, who've come to us for over a year asking for something which Mayor Spiller and the majority of us put together as a reasonable rent control ordinance, 4.25%. It's something that's not as onerous as some other towns have. It was after a lot of thinking and working together, the entire council passed it. So we're not trying to impose anything on you. You have a right to have input with us at any time. And I just wanted to make it clear again, these are tenants. These are not vocal rent control advocates. These are tenants who've asked for us to help protect them, especially during this time that's very difficult. That's why there's a rent freeze. It's been very difficult for people even to maintain their homes and stay in Montclair. We want to keep Montclair affordable. So thank you. I'm happy for you to talk to me at any time. Give me a call, Councilor Bob Russo. Thank you.
Caller with the number starting 973-816. It is your turn to comment. 973-816. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shepherd Hatcher. Firstly, I'd like to apologize. Start as a malfunction, so I wasn't able to properly call in. First of all, I'd like to echo my support for the rent control extension. I want to thank the town personally for taking all of the necessary precautions in protecting tenants and, you know, purveying in spite of an abhorrent opponent. I'd also like to thank Councilor Price Abrams for her extensive help when I was posing questions about the rent control ordinance. She was incredibly helpful, appointed me to multiple directories. So thank you after that, Ms. Price Abrams. I'd like to urge the town to also, in the coming weeks, there's going to be a lift on the eviction moratorium. And I'd like to urge the town to divorce the MPD from those proceedings. Actions are going to be hard enough. I don't think we need to involve police in that and start charging people who barely have enough money to afford rent. Hopefully, the town will see to that and see the morality in that. And I'd also like to urge the town to, in the coming months, obviously, it's also going to be getting extremely cold. So if we can start, hopefully, if there's any way the town could direct some funds to supporting our unhoused people. I know that there was a homeless shelter that a foundation associated directly with the police department was supporting. If there's any way, maybe there could be a diversion of police funds to support this homeless shelter, that would be incredible. We need to, of the 69 or 67 or 72 people, I think, I think 72 homeless people in Montclair, we should make sure that we're supporting them and making sure that they have food to eat, a safe shelter in these coming winter months. And yeah, thank you again very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mayor, if you'll allow me, a point of personal privilege, I feel obligated to disabuse those callers of the notion that the Montclair Police Department has anything to do whatsoever with the service of process with eviction that's handled by the Essex County Sheriff's Office in its entirety. Caller with the number starting with 973-271. 973-271. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Charles Gornally. I'm an attorney with Brock Eichler in Roseland. And I serve as counsel to the Committee of Petitioners as well as the Montclair Property Owners Association. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to dialogue on these issues. And I want to make two points. First, with respect to the rent control ordinance itself, which has been stayed pending the submission of a petition to put this question on the ballot. The rent control ordinance was adopted, and the last time I spoke to this group, or at least a part of this group, was the very night that the state of emergency was declared in New Jersey. And the principal difficulty that the landlord community and property owner community had at that time with the council's decision to move ahead in the midst of a pandemic was both its inability to participate on an online interface as well as a bona fide complaint, and with due respect to Councilman Russo, that the council had, did not affirmatively reach out to the other part of the landlord-tenant equation in making a determination about rent control. It's not just a question that people can pick up a phone or walk into a council meeting in normal times and express their view. When a governing body is going to adopt the only price control that it has in a municipality, and that's the control of rents, it's incumbent upon those officials that took their oath of office to involve both parts of the discussion. That is, hear fully from the tenants who have legitimate concerns and difficulty sometimes meeting their rent obligations, as well as the landlord community that has to pay their bills, maintain the property, pay their property taxes, pay their debt service, and provide safe and affordable housing for folks to live in. This council utterly failed in doing that. And I made that point in the beginning of pandemic. It remains true today. Ever since we moved forward to submit a petition, we have knocked on the council doors repeatedly, as well as on the doors of the tenant association, to discuss rent control in a way to avert, in a way to stop, in a way to prevent this issue from being put on the ballot. If this past election showed us anything, people have to get together and talk about the problem that they're trying to solve together. Each party cannot have it just their way. And frankly, ever since this ordinance was passed, we've attempted to have that dialogue with council, has not been met. We've attempted to have that dialogue with TUM and can't even get a return phone call. The second thing I'd note is what's on your agenda tonight in terms of a rent freeze. You know, a rent freeze was adopted by this council purely as a reaction to their inability to get a rent control ordinance implemented because the court restrained them from implementing the rent control ordinance that was passed at the beginning of this pandemic. Rent freeze was absolutely unnecessary. Nearly every large property owner in town expressed publicly to this council, as well as in writing, that they were not going to raise rents. That's the state of affairs today as well. No landlord worth his soul is raising rents in the middle of a pandemic. So go ahead and adopt it again. We'll consider where that's going to go. Thank you very much.
Can I respond to that again? I would hate to have a dialogue, but, sir, can you please call me when you get a chance? And I'll tell you why. Your law firm is named after Bill Brock. He was a very active leader in Montclair. He wanted to see tenants protected. He wanted to see diversity in town. He wanted to see an affordable Montclair. Bill is long gone, but he was the person who sponsored me to run for mayor in 2000. So I'd like to talk to you sometime about your law firm's history and the history of Bill Brock, the name on that law firm. To say we utterly failed to accuse me and my colleagues of that, it's just a false thing. And I just feel very bad that you're coming across that way to me. I knew Bill Brock, and he was my political mentor. And I'm just telling you, we're not doing this out of any malice towards landlords. We're doing this to protect tenants, which is over 40% of our population. And I resent any implication that we're doing the wrong thing or that we failed in any way to involve or include everyone. And, you know, I just want you to know that. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Caller with the number starting 518-369. It is your turn to speak. 518-369. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments below three minutes.
Hi, my name is Madeline Gale. I'm a resident who loves living and renting in Montclair. I'm calling also in support of an extension on the current freeze on rent increases while COVID crisis persists. In addition, I'm also voicing my support that the rent control ordinance will take and remain in effect in Montclair. We must continue to do what we can to ensure that low-income and working people can afford to remain in our homes and to maintain diversity throughout all of Montclair. Lastly, as a civil rights commissioner, I want to thank the council for making November Indigenous Peoples Month, as well as making September Latino Heritage Month, as well as Black History Month, and Women's History and LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the year. We appreciate and value that people of all races, genders, sexual orientation, and abilities are celebrated and recognized in Montclair. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Caller with the number starting 973-330. 973-330. It is now your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Frank Webacki. I live here in town, and I wanted to cover three things. One, I support the rent freeze ordinance. I don't think I need to speak too much to that. I think it's pretty obvious. To the rent control ordinance, I don't really want to cover other ground, but Councilor Russo, you're terribly wrong. And I'll call you if you want to explain how you're terribly wrong. But you're being disingenuous tonight, and it upsets me that you're doing that. The process that we used for this ordinance, regardless of what the subject was, what the purpose was, the process was flawed. And somebody used the term immoral. And this was not immoral, this process, but it really typified what we lived through for the last four years coming out of Washington. And that upsets me. The other thing about the rent control ordinance that nobody's being really clear on is that the number of people that are actually being covered by this, everybody keeps quoting this 42, 43% number. And I think if you really want to be honest and fair and transparent, you should speak to that. And you should speak to what you know, and you should speak to what you don't know. And lastly, my third point is, somebody called in about helping out the homeless, and that we should take the money away from the police. Unfortunately, that person has probably not been around town too long, has not followed the township business too carefully. But if they had, they would have known that one of the agreements coming out of the Arch District Seymour Development, when we took that property from somebody else that was going to use it for the homeless, that we would support homeless population of Montclair with financial backing, the council. And we didn't do that. So that's on us. It's not on the police. It's on the residents. We failed. We failed in a big way because we didn't care. So don't come in now and say you care, because it doesn't really matter. And that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Caller with the number, starting 973-424. 973-424. It is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record and do your best to keep your comments under three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deirdre Malloy, and I first want to thank everyone who spoke within the last five minutes that I heard. I'm just joining on, so I'm not going to be responding to anything prior to that. What I will say is, everyone has a right to their opinions and any suggestion that they would like to make. But what I am very upset about is that while there may not have been a specific meeting by invitation to the Property Owners Association by this council, which I am not privy to, I will say that without a shadow of a doubt, there have been multiple opportunities in this township, whether it was through a council meeting, whether it was from the front page of the Montclair Local, whether it was from the Patch, whether it was from Tappan to Montclair, whether it was from Baristanet, whether it was from any other social media medium, that there was something happening around rent control. Now, with regard to the people who may not be raising rents to an unconscionable rate, thank you for that. However, you have dozens upon dozens of landlords who are coming into this town owning one, two, and otherwise larger units, raising rents unconscionably, and unfortunately not knowing the business of property management nor landlord tenant issues. So, you know, I want to, I just want to state that while there are a certain group who are against rent control, the mass majority of people are being hurt here, and they're not working or they're having some other underemployment circumstance, you have landlords, and I have firsthand experience knowing as the chairperson of the landlord tenant housing advisory committee, as well as being involved with some other things here, supporting rent control, that this is a serious concern. So instead of making threats to the council and to the rest of us who are trying to make a difference, come to the table. Let's have a conversation about what will work. But to suggest a rent control ordinance or some kind of a cap on unconscionable abusive rates is not needed. It's just very unrealistic, especially during these times. So this is not a personal thing that I'm saying, but I'm saying it is maybe an ethical and a moral thing, that maybe we shall all come together and really stop threatening, because people are being hurt by this. This is real pain, real lives, real stories, real families.
Ms. Malloy, are you still there?
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm still here.
Did you want to finish your comments?
I do want to finish my comment. You know, I don't have access to meet with certain people, and if meetings were requested and they were denied, I personally certain didn't have anything to do with it. But apparently, in the midst of legal challenges, it may not have been wise to meet. So therefore, having said that, I think there's a real opportunity here for everyone listening to my voice who has a stake in this matter to really figure out what makes sense. Okay? So instead of spending time and ungodly amounts of money to fight something that's helping a great mass of people, you know, come together. If you need to call one of the council members to get some information, do so. But I'm really finding it very disappointing to hear these threats. It just is really not necessary. And again, I respect everybody's opinion, don't have all the facts, but I can tell you firsthand that there are lots of people being harmed, and landlords are abusing their opportunity to manage housing and care for people who live in them. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll consider public comment closed. Certainly, I think Mr. Karasik addressed some of the legal questions that were asked. I think we did address the question around the extension of the rent freeze, so hopefully that answered that fully as we see there. Just a note, as one of the callers had asked us to help give to the homeless, the township does contribute resources every year to groups that support the homeless, both in feeding and sheltering. So know that I'm sure that the commitment around those areas will continue in terms of providing those services. So want to note that as well. And certainly specifically, I know that our council colleague, Councilman Russo, addressed some of the rent control pieces. We're hearing the opinions as were shared by the callers today, and certainly, at least our conversations here. I think the general consensus, of course, my colleagues always speak for themselves, but that we feel we have a comprehensive rent control ordinance that tries to balance the needs of all involved, and it was done so in a process that engaged and got us to a point where we're able to pass something after over a year of deliberation. So with that, I will now move on to our business at hand. The first is an ordinance, ordinance 020-24, which is ordinance amending the two previous ones, 020-08 and 02020, to extend the temporary moratorium on rent increase due to COVID-19. Any, I guess I should open up, any comments from my colleagues on this one before I introduce it? Okay, so move. There a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, concerns, Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. You know, in response to so many of the callers, obviously, we're dealing with an ongoing crisis. I think it's not all humane. It's sort of common sense, and I appreciate that this body is taking it up expeditiously and that we're going to, I hope, and I expect that we will extend this provision, and that's for the better good. And we hope for their, you know, better times to resume, but they're not coming tomorrow. So I think this is certainly appropriate, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Absolutely. To be extended as needed, by the way. Any other questions, concerns, comments from the body? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schager? Counselor Schager?
You're muted.
We can hear you now, Councilwoman.
Hello. Okay, something happened to my screen here. I'm here, yes.
Counselor Yacovales?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm a yes. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Spiller?
No problem.
Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, not at all. Next, we have Resolution R 20-187, which is a resolution establishing the meeting dates for the governing body for the 2021 year, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Just, I wanted to thank all of you for the flexibility with the June dates allowing. Hopefully, Ben and I will be able to have our wedding pandemic, whatever's going on with that. We shall see, but thank you.
That's right. Wedding, council meeting, wedding, council meeting. Yeah, I think you got it. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none? Favor, please say aye.
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 Post?
Aye.
Okay, I heard all eyes on that. Thank you. Next is Resolution R 20-188, which is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Montclair Neighborhood Development Corporation in connection with the establishment of remote learning centers, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and certainly I'll just take a moment to note, you know, certainly pleased with a lot of assistance from a lot of sources. Councilman Cummings, certainly applaud your efforts in this regard. I know facing, as we all are trying to support some of the work that's going on in our community and specifically around education, I know that there's a push to kind of support families and students who are not able to get into remote center on their own, and this is an attempt at the township level, to be candid in that area. I know that a lot, put a lot of time into this. I know there was connections that had to happen. I know, certainly want to thank our commissioner, county commissioner, President Brandon Gill, and, you know, certainly, we were able to try and help and connect on the state level and do some other pieces. So pleased to help in that regard. And I know, Councilman Cummings, you worked a lot at a local level. I want to commend our deputy mayor. I know you were highly involved in figuring some of these pieces out, Mr. Staff, Mr. Karasik, looking at language and making sure things were where they needed to be to get this to happen, and certainly to all of our colleagues who, you know, wanted to make sure that things were moving in the right direction here. So certainly happy to see this, and, you know, pleased that we're able to play some role, mindful of the separations that exist, but offerings where possible. So with that, and it's been moved and seconded, I will open to other questions, concerns, or comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say I think you're being a little modest in terms of support from you and Brendan, and that I think it was you guys who made the state, or at least the state took a meeting with very soon, after some emails, and soon after that, the state made the decision to allow childcare centers to extend their license to other locations, which means this is not something that just benefits Montclair, but benefits townships all around the state. And I would also like to say that the YMCA played a large part in basically giving complete access to how they run their program so that it could be mirrored. I think the county did a great job in offering up a location that fits the need in terms of specifically the area that at this point is most in need of this. And again, I do want to say that, you know, Councilman Hurlock, Mayor Tim, as well as Ira, for, you know, the research and things that went around. But at the end of the day, I have to acknowledge Al Pelham, MNDC, and Maciel from MFVE for really spearheading this, and drive and working, doing some things. And finally, you know, Dr. Pons for basically saying that this was a need, and that the Board of Ed would make sure every child had a computer, a Wi-Fi device, as well as a meal. And so this hasn't been, this has been a true township and I think community effort. And I think, you know, for me, one of the things I do want to make public is, I, as a former vice chair of MNDC, I support the program, but I'm also very careful in terms of when it comes to voting. So although I had a part in this, you know, my abstaining from voting is just purely one to keep things above board. So council colleagues and everybody else, I think that's, I have to say, for something I think can be a model that if needed over time, may be extended throughout the township.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schager?
She is having a technical difficulty. I am helping her remotely as we speak.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Counselor Yacovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Thank you very much. Would we go to, you know, rather than giving her a second to get back on, next is our bill resolution. Would someone like to do the honors on that, or would you like me to do it?
I can do it.
Councilwoman Price Abrams, I will turn that over to you.
Oh. Does it start with whereas the invoices against, yes. Okay. Whereas invoices against the township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received, fully audited, and found correct. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the township of Montclair in the County of Essex that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid, and that checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively and hereinafter stated on the schedule attached hereto and made a part hereof, and I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, or comments on the bill list? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schager?
Councilwoman is still having technical difficulties. Mr. Fan is working hard to get her back online.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Counselor Yacovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have discussion items for our December 15 meeting, and Mr. Stafford, I'll turn it over to you to move through these items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On September 20th of 2016, by Resolution R 16-177, the township awarded a contract to Meadowlink to operate the senior citizens shuttle bus program. That was for a three-year term with two township options to extend the contract for an additional one-year term. The township extended the contract for one year by Resolution R 19-233, and that one-year term expires on January 31 of 2021. Based on the township's experience on ridership figures and on rider satisfaction, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would exercise the second and final option to extend the contract for a one-year term in an amount not to exceed $123,800. Item two is a resolution that would pursuant to NJSA 18A:22-1 at SEC, reappoint Deputy Mayor Hurlock to the Board of School estimate in the place of the mayor, and reappoint to the Board of School estimate counselors Schager and Price Abrams. All terms would be for January 1, 2021 through and including December 31, 2021. Item three is a resolution that would, in an effort to comply with NJAC 17:27-3.3, designate our township qualified purchasing agent, Mary Ann Horta, to serve as the township's public agency compliance officer for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31 of 2021. Item number four, on October 30th of 2020, the township received and opened one bid relative to the purchase of two new 2020 Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles to replace these two vehicles in the fleet, one of which was deemed a total loss as a result of a motor vehicle accident, parenthetically for which the township was appropriately compensated by our Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, and one of which has suffered irreparable mechanical issues and will be auctioned. The bid was analyzed, and based upon this analysis, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would award a contract to the lowest responsible and responsive, and only bidder, buyer Ford of Morris Town, New Jersey, in the amount of $67,757.57, or 50 cents, pardon me. Item number five, on November 18 of 2019, by Resolution R 19200, the township awarded its periodic contract for plumbing contractor services for one year with an option to renew at the same current terms for a 24-month period. This vendor has performed in an effective and efficient manner, and as such, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would exercise the option under the same terms and conditions for the period of November 18 of 2020, through and including November 17 of 2022, in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Item six is a resolution that would, in an effort to comply with the Essex County Community Development Program Cooperation Agreement, appoint two representatives to the Community Development Representatives Committee, the two being Councilor David Cummings and our Planning and Community Development Director, Janice Tally. Planning and Community Development Director, Janice Tally. Item seven, the township's existing 911 call-taking system at seven years old has obsolete hardware that vendors unfortunately will not guarantee suitable replacement for. In other words, if we need parts, we can't get them. Accordingly, this system, clearly critical to the effective direction of public safety services to our residents, has exceeded its useful life and is in need of replacement. Item seven is a resolution that would, through the State of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program, authorize the purchase of a Motorola Vesta 911 call-taking system from Motorola Solutions under state contract. More particularly, the vendor will install the call-taking system and will provide training, first-year warranty and onsite support for the amount of $200,000. Item number eight, on October 29 of 2019, following an appropriate request for proposals process, the township awarded a contract for the purchase of hardware commodities to American Royal Hardware for a term of one year with the township option to renew at the same current terms for a 24-month period. Based upon the efficient and effective services received from this vendor, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would authorize the exercising of the township's option to extend the contract at the same current terms for the period of October 29, 2020 through and including October 28, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Item number nine, on September 25 of 2018, following an appropriate bidding process, the township awarded a contract for preventative maintenance and repair of township-owned elevators to Elevator Maintenance Corporation for a term of two years with the township option to renew at the same current terms for a 12-month period. Based upon the efficient and effective services received from the vendor, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would authorize the exercising of the township's option to extend the contract at the same current terms for the period of September 25, 2020 through and including September 24, 2021 in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Item 10 is a grant insertion, and its resolution would serve as the township's request to the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of Division of Local Government Services, to approve the insertion of the grant in the referenced amount as an item of revenue in our budget for 2020 and as an appropriation in the same amount. This grant does not have a local match requirement. Item 11, state statute requires that a municipal governing body designate public depositories for the investment of funds and requires the adoption of a cash management plan. This resolution would establish such a cash management plan for calendar year 21 as proposed and recommended by our Township Chief Financial Officer, Padma Jara, and would name official depositories to comply with law. Number 12, state law allows a municipality to fix the rate of interest for delinquent taxes and municipal charges at a rate not to exceed 8% per annum for amounts under $1,500 and 18% per annum for amounts over $1,500 to be calculated from the date the tax was payable until the date that actual payment to the tax collector is made. State law also allows a municipality to fix a penalty to be charged to a taxpayer with delinquency in excess of $10,000 who fails to pay that delinquency as billed prior to the end of the fiscal year, as long as that penalty so fixed shall not exceed 6% of the amount of the delinquency with respect to each most recent fiscal year only. Item 12 is a resolution that would set the interest rate for delinquent taxes and municipal charges for the year 2021 at the rate of 8% per annum for amounts under $1,500 and 18% per annum for amounts over $1,500. No interest shall be charged if payment of any installment is made by the 10th of the month after the date upon which the same became payable effective January 1 of 2021. The resolution would also authorize a penalty of 6% on any delinquent taxes and municipal charges in excess of $10,000 in addition to the aforementioned interest charges. Item 13 is a resolution that would, as permitted by NJSA 40A:4-19, prior to the adoption of the township's 2021 temporary and permanent budgets, approve a temporary budget appropriation effective December 29 of 2020 for the listed debt service payment requirements for the coming fiscal year. Item 14 would be a resolution that would authorize the purchase of goods or services in 2021 from the vendors of the listed cooperative pricing councils, purchasing cooperatives, county educational service commissions, purchasing alliance, purchasing networks or by way of the New Jersey state contract. This resolution's approval would be pursuant to the conditions of each applicable vendor's contract with the purchasing organization. Item 15 would be a resolution that would authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with Matrix New World Engineering. The township's licensed site remediation professional contracted to analyze and address site remediation concerns as required by the NJDEP and related to the 219 Fullerton Avenue Public Works Yard underground storage tanks that were removed in the 1990s. Work to be performed by the firm would include an engineering study required by NJDEP to supplement its most recent investigations completed in 2019 and to more accurately locate the plume of fuel spilled in the 1990s or earlier to facilitate mapping of the area for removal. The cost of the study is $36,395. Item 16 is a resolution reappointing Mr. Karasik to the position of Township Attorney for the year 2021. Regarding item 17, a periodic review by the township's finance department revealed that various outstanding checks on the township's books should be canceled inasmuch as they are stale. This item 17 is a resolution that would authorize the canceling of those checks listed thereon. Item number 18 is a resolution supporting free and fair elections. On November 5 of 2020, the township received and opened seven bids for its 2020 Phase C sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. This project is procured in place pipe for sanitary sewers. Project work will include cleaning and rehabilitation of approximately 13,700 linear feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer main. The project will line tributaries of the Bloomfield Avenue area sewer system in this effort to reduce inflow and infiltration and to reduce potential negative future issues. The seven bids were reviewed and analyzed by the township and by its engineering consultants, and based upon that analysis, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would award a contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, Canyon Pipeline Inspection, in an amount not to exceed $432,300. Further to that item is item number 20, a resolution that would authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with suburban consulting engineers in connection with the previously discussed 2020 Phase C sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. The services to be provided by the firm that provided engineering services for the design and bidding of the project include construction administration and inspection services of the sanitary sewer system rehabilitation project, and the contract would be in an amount not to exceed $55,000. Item 2021 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of Benke economics for financial advisory and economic consultancy services for calendar year 2021 in an amount not to exceed $49,000. Item 22 is a resolution that would award a professional services contract to the firm PKF O'Connor Davies for municipal audit services for the period ending December 31 of 2020 for the sum of $84,500. Item 23 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of McManaman Scotland &amp; Bowman as bond counsel for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021 in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Item 24 is a resolution reappointing Peter D. Russo to the position of municipal public defender for calendar year 2021. Similarly, item 25 is a resolution appointing William R. Freed Jr. to the position of alternate municipal public defender for the calendar year.
Quick question, manager. May I ask a question? Maybe it's directed to Ira. Did we have a alternate municipal public defender before or is this the first time we're doing that?
Well, what happened is, is in the past, when the public defender had a conflict or couldn't appear on that day, public defender would go out and find somebody essentially to cover for him. This way, we can control the appointment since, which we thought would make better sense essentially. So we haven't had an alternate before appointed by the council, but in this case, we thought that would be the best, a better practice to do. And the payment, the public defender is paid by the session. So if the actual public defender, Peter Russo, isn't in the session, it's the Freed is. Only one of them's getting paid for that session.
Right, I just wanted to, I think there's a cap on how much we're spending on that, right? We have a...
Well, we have to, the public defender has to do whatever is required of him. There is a fund that the court maintains and collects from partial, from the fees in court, which actually funds the public defender. Typically, that fund isn't enough, and that's why we, we have a payment allocated in our budget, in fact, in my department budget for, in the event that the fund runs out. Generally speaking, the service doesn't stop if the money runs out, we just have to allocate more.
I mean, I just see in the resolution, it says $10,000. I just wanted to ask, did you decide on this particular individual or is it something we, we have the right to decide who?
It's a council appointment, and you could pick anyone you want. We have, basically, the municipal court has functioned fairly, you know, he really is independent of my office, for example, and managers and Mr. Russo's been public defender for at least a decade, I think. There's various people have been public defended and moved to prosecuted and moved to judge over the years. And since we've had only, we've never had a bad word and oftentimes good words, we haven't had any inclination to really change over the years.
Yeah, I know, and I want to make it clear, there's no relation between me and Mr. Russo, but it's Mr. Freed who I do know, he's a very good attorney. So that's just a name that you decided on, right?
Well, I think Peter Russo had been using him and...
Oh, he has done this before? Okay.
Exactly, and so we just, we thought, as I said, to have the better practice.
Okay, that answers my question. Sorry, thank you.
It's okay.
Item 26 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of Riker, Danzig, Scherer, Highland &amp; Peretti as conflict counsel and special litigation counsel for the period of 2021 in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Item 27 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of Janova Burns as labor counsel and special litigation counsel for calendar year 2021 in an amount not to exceed $52,000. Item 28 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of IMAC Insurance Agency for risk management and related contingency services for calendar year 2021 at the rate of 6% of the township's annual Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund assessment. Please note that this negotiated fee is 1% below the standard Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund annual risk manager fee at 7%. So we're paying less than the other members are paying their risk managers. The local public contracts law, NJSA 40A:11-51A2 at SEC, authorizes this agreement to be awarded without bidding as an extraordinary unspecifiable service, and therefore I have submitted to you a standard certification declaration for an extraordinary unspecifiable Similarly, item 29 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of IMAC Insurance Agency for insurance brokerage and for insurance consultancy services for the period of 2021 for the sum of $95,000. Again, the local public contracts law, NJSA 40A:11-51A2, authorizes this agreement to be awarded without bidding as an extraordinary unspecifiable service. And again, I have submitted to you a standard certification declaration for an extraordinary unspecifiable service. Item 30 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of Eric M. Bernstein &amp; Associates as special tax counsel for the period of 2021 in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Similarly, item 31 is a resolution that would authorize the award of a professional services contract to the firm of DeFrancesco Bateman Kunsman Davis Lehrer &amp; Flom as special tax counsel for the period of 2021 in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Lastly for me, I said lastly for me, is item 32, which is a grant insertion, and its resolution would serve again as the township's request, the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of Division of Local Government Services, to approve the insertion of the grant in the referenced amount as an item of revenue in the township's 2020 budget and as appropriation in the same amount. The grant does not have a local match requirement, and this grant particularly serves to fund portions of our lead poisoning prevention program. It's a State of New Jersey Department of Health Childhood Lead Program grant. Some of the funding is used to offset nurses' salaries, and some of the funding is used to purchase equipment for investigation and testing. And Mayor, at this time, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the preview of all of those items. Thank you very much. With that, I will go to my council colleagues to see if there are any comments that you may have. Let's go today, let's start with Councilman Yacovales.
Thanks, Mayor. I did not want to interrupt Mr. Stafford's monologue. I hope you got some water there, sir. I did have a couple of questions about a couple of the items. Item number four, just in regards to the acquisition of the two vehicles. Just out of curiosity, just wondering, just in terms of receiving insurance money, I know you mentioned that the township had received insurance money due to the total loss of the vehicle. Is that money used to offset the cost of the new vehicles? And similarly, do the proceeds of the sale of the second vehicle, car 210, offset the purchase price of the new vehicles as well? So in other words, is the money that's being gained from the total loss of the first vehicle and the sale of the second vehicle, is that used to offset the purchase of the new vehicles?
I think it's fair to say that for all intents and purposes. I'm not sure it works the same way that it would in your checking account or in my checking account. I would imagine that Mizrau and Mr. McEluso put the proceeds of the auction at the end of the year or at the end of every two years whenever we do the auction, as well as the proceeds from the insurance claim in either our general fund or in our surplus fund balance. But for all intents and purposes, it's cost avoidance for us in the end.
Thank you. On item number eight, just a mention and a thanks, obviously, I know there's a robust process, just a ton of RFPs, but it's great to see when we're able to award local contracts. I know Counselor Russo has said this a few times, specifically to Montclair local businesses. So that's great to see. Item number 10, I was just hoping you could explain that a little bit more. I'm just not familiar with what the mill grant is and what that money will be used for.
In this particular instance, it is a grant from Partners for Health that would be used to continue to virtually offer seniors in the Montclair Institute of Life and Learning classes that would otherwise be held at our Edgemont Park Shelterhouse.
Thank you. Item 18, I just want to comment, and thanks for, my colleagues, for advancing this. You know, this resolution really is specifically meant to address both verbal and legal attacks on clerks, on Secretary of State, state legislatures, the rights of voters to have their votes counted without fear of disenfranchisement. So... And so, I'm really glad that we're going to be making this statement. I think it's important. Terms of other, just a couple of quick comments. Obviously, this past Saturday was Small Business Saturday. I thought it was a huge success. I was able to make it to all five of our business districts, spend a little money in every district. Happy to do that. We saw a lot of activity, a lot of people shopping, and businesses really doing the right thing in terms of just ensuring the right volume of people were in and out of the stores, so things are kept safe. And I just hope that Montclarians will continue to choose to support local businesses when they're procuring goods and services, you know, really look to choose Montclair first. As callers mentioned, you know, last night, I drove around just to observe, you know, just how, similarly, what I did when we had the tropical storm this summer, just to see in real time what happens. And I'm always humbled by, you know, when I see the DCS employees out there as a sort of crisis rapid response team. So, it was really good to see them out there taking care of, making sure we were blocking off where pretty dramatic flooding was taking place, particularly under railroad bridges. Definitely saving a lot of people from, from damage inconvenience are more serious matters. So, thanks to them. I want to commend David, Councilor Cummings, for the food giveaway this past weekend. That was a logistical feat, that kind of coordination. You should be really proud. I'm really happy to see that all come together. So, thank you for doing that, sir. I also want to mention that today is World AIDS Day, and, you know, we've lost to AIDS over 700,000 New Jersey residents over the last few decades. And I don't think I have to tell anybody, an entire generation of gay men that came before me were essentially wiped out by this disease. So, it's important on this day for me to take a moment to reflect on that, on the loss. And globally, it's upwards of 75 million people have perished from the disease, and a lot of work has been done, and it's nowhere near what it used to be, and there's been a lot of progress on treatment, but it's still something to be conscious of. We are not out of the woods yet when it comes to that. Lastly, I know the planning board is going to be considering, or there's public comment coming up on Monday, the 14th of December, for inclusion of the Safe Complete Streets Plan into the Township Master Plan. To the extent that's appropriate or you feel comfortable, I would ask my colleagues to make comments and to testify if you do support, in support of the planning board's adoption of that plan. I think it's very important for the future of the town that those guidelines be included. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Sir, next, go to Councilman Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said enough tonight, I guess, and I guess I can't talk to anybody gets sued, and so I apologize for that invitation I extended. I just wanted to indicate, the mayor and I went to an ice opening the other day. It was a new place called Daily Dose. A wonderful Dominican and Cuban family has rented the place. It used to be a coffee house on Glen Ridge Avenue, near the train station, close to the train station area. And I just hope people patronize this Daily Dose, nice young family that opened up with very good desserts and drinks and coffee items. And the mayor and I can attest to their very enthusiastic investment in our town by opening a business here during the pandemic. So, we wish them good luck. Also, Reverend Leggett, I just want to second what Councilor Hurlock said. Reverend Leggett and I have been adjunct faculty members at Montclair State for years. He's been a member of my teachers' union, AFT, adjunct faculty union, so I wish him good luck in his employment and thank him for his many years of teaching in a department not far from political science where I teach. Just one last thing, we passed Thanksgiving, you know, during that Thanksgiving holiday, we were not leaning, and I just want to wish everyone a good Thanksgiving, which has passed, but also point out that during that same time period, we commemorated a couple of people that were my, is what I said before about Bill Brock, that's locally, he was my mentor, but my mentors in politics are President Kennedy and his brother Robert. So, in January, in November 20th was the birthday of Robert Kennedy, 1950 birthday, and his brother John, we lost in 1963, of course, his birthday was, or his day of death was November 22nd. So, those two dates, right before Thanksgiving, gave me pause again as to why I'm even here. And it's because of those two brothers leading the New Frontier, doing so many things to try to help us in civil rights, the space program, peace, negotiating with the Russians, and ending the test ban treaty, ended nuclear weapons testing, the Peace Corps, all these great things that President Kennedy in a few short years did. And, you know, we're just getting past this election, and we're seeing fighting still over, you know, who's really the winner. We know who won. We have to all work together, you know? It's going to be a very close Senate and House of Representatives. The new president, President Biden, is going to have to work with Vice President Harris, with the Senate, and with the House of Representatives to get us some aid for our communities. And what I'm saying about that again is this, it's not a Republican or Democratic issue, it's not a liberal or conservative issue, it's not a partisan issue. Our cities and our towns need aid that can only come from another CARES Act, and a bigger CARES Act, that's the HEROES Act, but something like that to give us some assistance as we move through this pandemic. And it's communities like Montclair that are doing the right thing with our coronavirus, the mayor's committee, but we need that aid money going into this next year. We've got, we've depleted basically what they put together seven, seven or eight months ago, but we need that help. So, I'm asking everyone to fight, to get your legislators and get your Congress members to support this, even the couple of Republicans that represent us in New Jersey. They need to support this, because it's going to help New Jersey get through this by next, this time next year, we hopefully will be over all this, we'll have our health back, and we'll have our economy back, but we need federal aid. That's the only place that can give us help. Now, the federal government has no cap on what it can spend. Many people disagree with that, but in emergencies, they could just print money, send us help, and that's what we need. So, let's all get together to fight for the aid that New Jersey and that Montclair needs through, if it's the HEROES Act or whatever we call it, it's going to be something that's the next few months of struggle to get that help to our community. So, please, everybody, pull together and support this. It's not a partisan issue, it's for the benefit of our communities, our schools, our seniors especially need help, our government budgets are hurting. This is a time for unity and working together in the spirit of our new president, Joe Biden. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Next, I'd like to go to our fourth ward, Councilman, Councilman Cummings.
Mayor, thank you. And Peter, I appreciate the acknowledgement for the giveaway on Saturday, but I must admit that that was an effort that was led by Million Man Montclair, who this year couldn't do their normal Thanksgiving turkey giveaway, and instead, they got support from the Kiwanis Club of Livingston, who actually donated the thousand food boxes, and then the Brothers from Omega Psi Phi, Men of Eureka Lodge, Young Black Fathers, all stood up to come. And as you said, get out there and take care of a pretty, you know, something that took a lot of, lot of work. And County stepped up, sent a couple of sheriffs, Police Department helped out, DC Young, Lieutenant Williams, as well as Chief Conforti all showed up. So, there was, it was a good event, and we did get rid of a thousand boxes. So, it was, it was, it was a long day. Finally, I, you know, I want to commend Xena Floyd. She's the restaurant owner of Mosso in the South End. Xena's done a great job in setting up or getting a pop-up store started, called Artisanal Pop-Up Store, in the South End Business District, and it's truly an example of her effort to really just be an advocate for the district with some unique areas. She actually had an owner open up two storefronts that were not being utilized, and if you drive by, just seeing the clothing and the things that are in there does brighten up the street. And she also went and got some small trees to be planted where she put up some light. So, if you know Xena, you know she's a very aggressive, her and I go at it, but I still, you know, there are times where people's effort really need to be commended. In this case, you know, I just have to applaud her for those efforts. I know I'm going to pay for it sometime in the future, but I'm still going to, you know, acknowledge her for what she's done.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, let's go to our third ward, Councilwoman, Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, just a couple of things as well. I also know Pastor Leggett just a bit, he, he was a good friend, or is, of Rabbi Stephen Kushner, who, who led Temple near to Mead, where I've been a member for over 20 years. And they shared a lot of films and did some collaboration, and, and as was mentioned in the acknowledgement of the proclamation, some, some pulpit swapping a little bit, and part of the Interfaith Hospitality Network. I know I stayed overnight in that church on a couple of occasions in some of those community-based efforts. So, just really want to commend him for, you know, very devoted and, and fulfilled kind of a calling as a, as a pastor of the church and of this community, and, and wish him, you know, happiness and, and good journeys going forward for the rest of his maybe retired life, maybe he'll still be active in his own ways. So, best wishes to him. Also, just a couple of things, a little bit mentioned already, you know, I want to just keep encouraging folks to continue to buy local, it's really an important part of, you know, the vibrance of this local economy, and, you know, we're pulled in all kinds of ways to purchase online and everything else. So, find your way to, to, you know, safely be in and out of our own, you know, districts and, and contribute that way as you can. And then lastly, just some, you know, further word of encouragement, as, you know, we know we're coming upon, the numbers of COVID cases are just, unfortunately, you know, we're all watching them increase, notwithstanding the measures being taken. Just got to really encourage people to, you know, try and meet with others outside and save ways, you know, and otherwise, just make good choices, like we tell our kids. So, I have to just really be a voice for that to remind us that the winter's coming, it's going to be a little bit long, I think, in some ways. We hope there's some arc of light at the end of the tunnel with the news of these vaccinations, but, so to stay the course, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, let's go to second ward, Councilwoman. I know she's, she's back on. So, Councilwoman Schlager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very clearly.
Okay. Sorry, I had some camera issues on my new laptop. I just wanted to go back, I wasn't able to vote on resolutions B, C, and D. That's when I, when my camera checked out. So, am I able to vote on those at this time?
Yes, you are. Clerk can record your votes.
Okay, thank you. So, Clerk, I would vote yes on B, C, and D?
I got it. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to remind everybody that today is Giving Tuesday, where it's a countrywide day to give and support the charities that are near and dear to your heart. We still have a few hours left to do that, so if anybody's inclined, that would be a wonderful thing to do. The charities are in great need these days in all aspects, so, so that would be great. I know that I was able to do two charities on this afternoon, and, and it felt really good. Also, I wanted to ask the manager, I don't know if you have any insight this evening, but maybe you could get back to us, how is our animal shelter doing during this time? Is it still closed? Are they accepting animals? Are they accepting donations? I'd gotten a couple of inquiries from constituents if they could bring food or blankets over.
I don't have to get back to you. I would tell you, they are accepting donations. Something tells me if somebody wanted to go there right now and bring a donation, that somebody would meet them. They can reach, folks who would like to make a donation can reach the animal shelter either by phone or by email, the numbers are on our website, or they can call the Health Department and, and be transferred over. So, fear not, those donations can come in at any time folks would like.
Okay, that's great news. Thank you. I also want to give a rare kudos to PSCNG on two occasions in the last two weeks. I have seen them out and about changing light fixtures that have been out on our streetlights. I walk my dog almost every night in the dark on a couple of streets, but now the lights are on, and I actually saw some trucks in, on two occasions, changing the light fixtures, and I'm so glad to see that. So, it's, it's been an issue for quite a while, and, and I know, Mr. Stafford, you said that there was a little back and forth with PSCNG. So, they're out there doing their, doing their job. So, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And now, we'll go to our deputy mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things to note. First off, I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I have been making the rounds, so to speak. Saturday, we were at the kickoff for the Salvation Army here in Montclair with Major DeMichael for their holiday kickoff, always something that we look forward to here in Upper Montclair Village this last Saturday. Also, I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I had made a stopover with the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Community Outreach Group to Tony's Kitchen, where we delivered much-needed food supplies. I'm sure it was for you as well, Mr. Mayor. It was, it was a very moving experience for me, especially this year, given all of the need and how much that that has really expanded since, since the pandemic hit. The amount of space is, is pretty incredible. There's a huge need, again, you know, people are so willing, that's a very good cause in town. There's a couple of these walk-in freezer refrigerators even in the parking lot now, which will give you just a slight taste of the magnitude of the need. And there was, of course, the fire department was there with Chief Herman and the men and women under his command, and former chief of police Russo as well. So, always good to see, see him there as well, participating. Saturday, I was out and about doing some shopping as well with the small businesses up in Montclair and elsewhere in town, always something I look forward to. Very impressed with the citizens, the shoppers, the shopkeepers, everyone's doing a great job with social distancing, wearing masks, being respectful of each other's space. So, keep it up, Montclair. I'm glad we were able to help in a little way by doing our annual parking for the, for the citizens to go shopping and to enjoy that as well. Then, today also, I had the pleasure and the honor of speaking at the Montclair Rotary Club's virtual luncheon. I want to thank Linda Cranston for the invitation. We were talking about issues pertinent to Montclair and the things that the town is doing to work with businesses going forward. It was a very good conversation. Thank all participants, again, we had, we had a good crowd. And then, of course, many of us participated last week in many of the sessions that were offered by the league. Unfortunately, we were virtually present this year, but very helpful panels. I know many of us have talked about it since, whether it's legalization of marijuana, pandemic funding issues, the whole gamut was really, it was a very informative week. I think I, not that I counted, Mr. Mayor, but I think I took 17 classes last week, and every one of them was, was actually very pertinent and important. And I know I saw many of you virtually there as well. So, I want to thank the league for their, for their efforts to, that's, that's a big undertaking to do all that virtually. I mean, they literally have hundreds of people in these sessions. And of course, you know, we've still participated in many openings with businesses, which is very promising to see. I know many of us have been at ribbon cuttings all over town, which just really speaks to the resilience of the Montclair community going forward, and how when we get together on issues and we really work together, a lot can be accomplished. So, that's been a thrill as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, let me ask Deputy Manager anything?
Yes, Mayor, in regards to the food giveaway on Saturday, it does my heart good to see these young men putting the time and effort into their community. It's an extension of a long history of that, and they actually do honor, and I guess, Councilor Cummings will recognize his name, so the Wally Choices, the Norman Mitchells, the Dicky Bryants, the Big Rick Tellers, these guys did this 40, 50 years ago, and there's a long history of that, and it's good to see these young men picking up the mantle and giving back to their community, putting in the work, and I'm very proud of them. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
I don't have anything, Mayor. Wish you very well.
Got you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manager?
I have a few things, Mayor. I'd like to just remind residents that COVID-19 is being, testing is being conducted. The state, the governor's office reached out to us just about a month ago. The state and with the grace of the County of Essex in letting us use their Wally Choice Community Center. And I'd like to also thank MNDC for being gracious enough to allow us to occupy the building, us meaning the state, to do the testing. Testing sessions were held on the 23rd and 24th, as well as yesterday and today. And there will be two more testing sessions next Monday, the 7th, and Tuesday, the 8th. The hours for testing are 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., again, on December 7th and December 8th. Walk-ins are welcome. There are no appointments required. Participants are asked not to eat or drink for 30 minutes before testing. And insurance is requested but not required. Our county is also offering COVID-19 testing every day this week. Testing is performed each day at one of six different testing sites throughout the county and at differing hours. For the county, appointments are required, but of course, the testing is also free. Information can be found and an appointment can be made by clicking the county's COVID website, www.essexcovid.org, or by calling 973-877-8456 for an appointment. Again, it's every day this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And there was testing today and there was testing yesterday. We have free flu vaccines available on December 3rd from 11 o'clock a.m. to 1 o'clock p.m. Flu vaccines are, of course, exceptionally important, especially this year. They're being offered by Tony's Kitchen at St. Luke's Church, that's on South Fulton Street here in town. And also on December 3rd from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., again, at the Wally Choice Community Center in Glenfield Park. The free flu clinics are sponsored. Again, they're free. The Montclair Neighborhood Development Corporation is sponsoring. We're being supported by the County of Essex, by Montclair NAACP Committee, and our fourth ward councillor, Mr. Cummings. From our recreation department, Santa Claus would like to hear from all children and will write a letter back. Children interested in writing a letter to Santa and receiving a letter back should mail their letters to Santa Claus. That's Santa Claus, 205 Claremont Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey, 07042. Letters must have a return address with a name so that Santa knows where to write back. And deadline for letters to Santa is Tuesday, December 15. For updates from the state regarding COVID-19, please visit the state's one-stop information hub, covid19 nj.gov. Again, covid19 nj.gov. I think it's important, again, to point specifically within the New Jersey COVID-19 information hub to the state's job and hiring portal. As of this afternoon, I looked at about 5 o'clock, thousands upon thousands of jobs are available, posted with 1,219 different companies. And someone who's seeking employment can do so and can make their search for jobs by industry, by location, and by various other filters. General questions about COVID-19 may be posed by calling the state's comprehensive information referral service by dialing 211. You can visit our township website, COVID-19 section for updates on township operations during the pandemic. And if you haven't signed up for our SWIFT 911 Alert System, you're urged to do so so that you can receive updates by blast. The sign-up form can be accessed on our website homepage. And you can follow our Facebook page, our Twitter feed as well. Our Twitter feed is @montclairenj.gov. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. I have to say, did appreciate the joy it brought you. To make sure you clarified that letters to Santa Claus are mailed to Santa Claus. But thank you. Appreciate that. Right. Also, want to give a big thank you to the Governor's Deputy Chief of Staff for really being a great partner on some of that testing that you noted. She just did a phenomenal job, but very appreciative that she was willing to come to Montclair to do that free and post-holiday testing. I know they have a lot of options there, but they've come here before and able to help serve our community. And I just want to say a big thank you there to Deb Corvaca and all her work and certainly the administration's team in everything that they did there and are doing there. Also, certainly, you know, like many, you know, out on Saturday, you're just able to kind of get out there and do some local shopping and see our local businesses, each trying to both do things safely, but also make sure they are continuing to, you know, be successful through this pandemic and challenging time. So great to see their efforts and our residents hopefully shopping local, which is an important piece of it, too. As Deputy Mayor noted, as we had the opportunity to go to Tony's Kitchen and deliver some food there, I just wanted to note, Deputy Mayor, as you alluded to, the way we've seen that they've just been able to transform rooms and about every, you know, bit of space you can imagine to store more food, to bag more items, to bring, to box more meals. It's just, it's great to see the support that's there, you know, that they have the infrastructure to take in and get that food out and to see the people that continue to give their time, give their dollars, give their resources to kind of get there and to help with that. It's just, it's impressive and needed. So a big thank you to Tony's Kitchen as well. And the last thing I will just note, certainly, it was probably one of the biggest things, brought a smile to my face. Councilor Russo, I have to say a big thank you as we went to Daily Dose because you very kindly shared half of the mini donuts with me that I was able to bring home. So I want to say a big thank you publicly again, because I know it was a big thing for you. You wanted to bring a lot of those donuts home and you shared them with me. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it's appreciated. So with that, I see, I think everyone's had a chance to speak. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Nice evening.
Thank you.